The House will come to order. Without objection, we revert to the clerk taking the roll.
Barr.
Barr, East Bethel, present.
Barr, East Bethel, present. Green. Green.
Green, Park Rapids, present.
Green, Park Rapids, present. Zhong Ti.
Zhong Ti, St. Paul, present.
Zhong Ti, St. Paul, present. Robbins. Robbins, St. Paul, present.
motions and resolutions.
Winkler moves that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number... Are we going with two? ...to be recalled from the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice Reform Finance, be given its second and third readings, and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Becker-Finn, would you be willing to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I believe that's... The motion to suspend the rules on House File Two. And it's to a technical change... It's a bill where there's a technical change to the police... Public Safety and Criminal Justice bill that we passed in special session.
Representative Johnson.
Madam Speaker, members. This is something that we do need to take care of. Please vote for the suspension of the rules.
Members, the first vote here will be a voice vote. It is a vote on suspension of the rules, and the next motion will be a roll call. So on the motion to... I'm sorry, recall the bill from Committee and put it... Recall it from the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice Reform Finance, to be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails.
Pursuant to Article Four, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared so that House File Number Two be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Becker-Finn.
Yes, Madam Speaker, that is my motion.
Any discussion to the motion? This would put the bill before us. See no discussion? The clerk will take the roll on the motion.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker-Finn. Becker-Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Boe. Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell. Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L. Carlson L. Christiansen. Christiansen. Claflin. Claflin. Considine.
Considine, votes aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt.
Um, do they need a direct address or can I...
If you want to get it, I'm sure. Subika's fine.
Excused. Doubt excused. Davids. Davids, aye. Dafne. Dafne. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer. Detmer, aye. Draskowski. Draskowski. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian, excused. Fisher.
Aye. Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen. Franzen. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassl.
Grassl, aye.
Grassl, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan. Hassan. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jergens.
Jergens, aye.
Jergens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whitoun.
Katiza Whitoun, aye.
Katiza Whitoun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Paudine. Kunish Paudine. Lehman. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero. Lucero, no. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald. McDonald. Mecklin.
Mecklin, aye.
Mecklin, aye. Miller.
Miller, no.
Miller, no. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran. Moran. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor.
Nor, aye.
Nor, aye. Nornis.
Aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni.
Nornis, aye.
Navatni. Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell. Purcell. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Uh, Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sansstead.
Sansstead, aye.
Sansstead, aye. Salk.
Salk, aye.
Salk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundin.
Sundin, aye.
Sundin, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdol.
Erdol, aye.
Erdol, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, aye.
Wazlowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wagamot. Wagamot. Zhong J. Zhong J. Zhong Ti.
Zhong Ti, aye.
Zhong Ti, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Carlson L. Carlson L. Christiansen.
Christiansen, aye.
Christiansen, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Claflin.
Dafne, aye.
Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Draskowski. Draskowski, no. Franzen. Franzen, no. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Kunish Paudine.
Paudine, aye.
Kunish Paudine.
Kunish Paudine, aye.
Kunish Paudine, aye. McDonald. McDonald. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye.
Wagamot.
Wagamot, aye.
Wagamot, aye. Zhong J. Zhong J.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number Two.
Second reading. Discussion to the bill. I recognize the author of the bill, the member from Ramsey, Representative Mariani.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and thank you for the vote to suspend the rules. This is a technical fix to the Minnesota Police Accountability Act that this body passed in the last special session with bipartisan support, well over 100 votes, and was subsequently signed into law. There is, however, a need to do some technical fixes to the language that we passed. The Post Board itself brought us that language. This is the Peace Officers Standards and Training Board, in which our bill directs them to do a number of things. However, they discovered some need for clarifying some language, as well as to adjust some dates so that we had a workable timeframe for them. This is purely a technical bill. There's no new policy being created or policy being undone. My counterpart in the other body, Senator Lemmer, is carrying this bill as well. And I do believe all four caucuses have signed on, and so I do thank Representative Johnson for encouraging us to suspend the rules. Very quickly, there are five provisions of technical fixes in the bill. The first would extend the deadline for the very first meeting of the newly created Community Relations Council. We're going to push that out with this language from September 1st to October 15th. As it so turned out, the appointments are due a little bit later, so it's very difficult to convene a group until everyone's been appointed. So we need to make that date correction. There's also a date adjustment by which we require the chief law enforcement officers of our various law enforcement entities, local units in the state, to submit data to the Post Board. The issue is that we require a January 15th deadline in the current language. However, we do not yet have a, and will not for several months, no doubt, have a data system to create an app for Post in order to receive that. And so we're pushing that out until July 1st of 2021. The third provision has to do with mandatory training. It's clarifying that all mandated crisis intervention and mental illness training be provided by approved entity. Again, this is not new policy. We do have that intended, that language in the current bill. This just provides clarity about that. It also clarifies that any police officer with a license renewal date before June 30th of 2022, who received mandated training prior to July 21st of '21, is not required to receive the training by an approved entity until the officer's next three-year licensing cycle. What that really means is that a number of officers have already received training in this area. And so with the new requirement, it would have required every single officer immediately to have that new training. It's just not a very workable thing. And so we're adjusting it so that when they're next up for their training, they would then fulfill the directives in the legislation. There's also mandatory dates for officers receiving mandatory autism training. That date has also moved forward out to 2022. It's similar to the first issue because it's logistically almost impossible to require every single officer in the state to receive that training by the date in the original language. And then finally, there's a clarification about appropriation that we made in the bill for $145,000 to the Post to hire a staff member to oversee meeting the new training requirements. Even though we made that appropriation, and that was our intent, we were not clearly specific in the language. And so this just simply clarifies that intent. So members, with these technical fixes, it'll allow the Post to carry out the intent and the direction, the directives of the legislature when we pass House File One in the last special session. And so I urge your support, and I would stand for any questions.
There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number Two.
Third reading. The member from... Isanti, Representative Johnson.
Madam Chair, members, I want to thank Chair Mariani for bringing this forward. This bill clears up five important things in the legislation passed last special session, Special Session Number Two. It... One of the things, as Representative Mariani stated, it clarifies the starting date for their first meeting. It's tough to have your first meeting when the members aren't appointed yet. It also changes the date for the new mandated training, so it falls in line more with the officer's three-year cycle on their license, and gives opportunity for all the groups to get together to make sure they get the proper training. It also sets... Changes the date for those that are post-licensed eligible now or about to take their post test, to give them an opportunity for the schools and the colleges to teach our officers before they can even take a test to see if they can become a police officer in Minnesota, that they can work into their curriculum, these mandates that we just put into effect. And then it also, another important piece, it actually specifies where the funding is supposed to go that we appropriated last special session in Special Session Number Two. And with that, I would ask members to support this bill.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on House File Two.
Acem. Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, yes.
Baker, aye. Becker-Finn. Becker-Finn, aye. Bennett. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Boe. Boe, aye. Brand.
Brand votes aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell. Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christiansen.
Christiansen, aye.
Christiansen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt, excused. Davids. Davids, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer. Detmer, aye. Draskowski. Draskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian, excused. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen. Franzen, no. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo. Garofalo. Gomez.
Aye.
Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez. Gomez. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassl.
Grassl, aye.
Grassl, aye. Grunhagen, excused. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jergens.
Jergens, aye.
Jergens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whitoun.
Katiza Whitoun, aye.
Katiza Whitoun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Paudine.
Kunish Paudine, aye.
Kunish Paudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesch. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero. Lucero, no. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, no.
McDonald, no. Mecklin.
Mecklin, no.
Mecklin, no. Miller.
Miller, no.
Miller, no. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy. Murphy. Nash. Nash, no. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor.
Nor, aye.
Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni. Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robins. Robins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, no.
Runbeck, no. Sandell. Sandell. Sandstead.
Sandstead, aye.
Sandstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslowick.
Waslowick, aye.
Waslowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Jong J.
Jong J, aye.
Jong J, aye. Jong T.
Jong T, aye.
Jong T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye. Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye.
There being 121 ayes and 10 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to.
Winkler moves that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number Four be recalled from the Committee on Government Operations and be given its second, third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Without objection, we'll revert to messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. I hereby, uh, this is to notify you that the Senate is now duly organized for the 2023rd Special Session pursuant to the Minnesota Constitution and Minnesota statutes. The message is signed Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate. Madam Speaker, I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate File herewith transmitted. Senate File Number One, the message is signed Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate Files.
First reading, Senate File Number One, an act relating to human services. Pursuant to Article Four, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moved that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that Senate File Number One be given its second, third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Uh, Madam Speaker, members, this is the Day Services Bill. This will suspend the rules and put it in front of us. Uh, it will recall a roll call and require a roll call and ask for a yes vote.
Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would recommend a yes vote.
The clerk will take the role on the motion.
Acom.
Acom, aye.
Acom, aye. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman. Bierman, aye. Bo. Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell. Cantrell, aye. Carlson, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye. Carlson, l.
Carlson, l, aye.
Carlson, l, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Koncedine.
Koncedine, no.
Koncedine, no. Daniels. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt, excused. Davids. Davids, aye. Dafne. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer. Detmer, aye. Draskowski. Draskowski, aye. Eklund. Eklund.
Eklund, Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Ericson.
Ericson, aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian, excused. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen. Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Grassel.
Grassel, aye.
Grassel, aye. Grunhagen, excused. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann. Heinzmann. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, aye.
Katiza Whittoon, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creesha.
Creesha, aye.
Creesha, aye. Kunish Podine.
Kunish Podine, aye.
Kunish Podine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero. Lucero, aye. Lewick.
Lewick, aye.
Lewick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, I.
McDonald, I. Mecklen.
Mecklen, I.
Mecklen, I. Miller.
Miller, I.
Miller, I. Moller.
Moller, I.
Moller, I. Moran.
Moran, I.
Moran, I. Morrison.
Morrison, I.
Morrison, I. Munson.
Munson, I.
Munson, I. Murphy.
Murphy, I.
Murphy, I. Nash. Nash, I. Nelson M.
Nelson M, I.
Nelson M, I. Nelson N.
Nelson N, I.
Nelson N, I. New. New, I. Nor.
Nor, I.
Nor, I. Nornus.
Nornus, I.
Nornus, I. Navatney. Navatney, I. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, I.
O'Driscoll, I. Olson.
Olson, I.
Olson, I. O'Neill.
O'Neill, I.
O'Neill, I. Palowski.
Palowski, I.
Palowski, I. Purcell.
Purcell, I.
Purcell, I. Petersburg.
Petersburg, I.
Petersburg, I. Pearson.
Pearson, I.
Pearson, I. Pinto.
Pinto, I.
Pinto, I. Poppy. Poppy.
I. Poppy, I.
Poppy, I. Poston.
Poston, I.
Poston, I. Pryor.
Pryor, I.
Pryor, I. Quam.
Quam, I.
Quam, I. Richardson.
Richardson, I.
Richardson. I.
Richardson, I.
Richardson, I. Robbins. Robbins, I. Runbeck.
Runbeck, I.
Runbeck, I. Sandell.
Sandell, I.
Sandell, I. Sandsted.
Sandsted, I.
Sandsted, I. Salk. Salk, I. Schumacher.
Schumacher, I.
Schumacher, I. Schultz.
Schultz, I.
Schultz, I. Scott.
Scott, I.
Scott, I. Stevenson.
Stevenson, I.
Stevenson, I. Sundin.
Sundin, I.
Sundin, I. Swazinski.
Swazinski, I.
Swazinski, I. Tabkey.
Tabkey, I.
Tabkey, I. Tice.
Tice, I.
Tice, I. Tarkelson.
Tarkelson, I.
Tarkelson, I. Erdal.
Erdal, I.
Erdal, I. Vang.
Vang, I.
Vang, I. Vogel.
Vogel, I.
Vogel, I. Wagenius.
Wagenius, I.
Wagenius, I. Waslowick.
Waslowick, I.
Waslowick, I. West.
West, I.
West, I. Winkler. Winkler, I. Wogomot.
Wogomot, I.
Wogomot, I. Jong J.
Jong J, I.
Jong J, I. Jong T.
Jong T, I.
Jong T, I. Yuakim.
Yuakim, I.
Yuakim, I. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, I. Heinzmann. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, I.
Heinzmann, I. Yep.
The motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Senate File Number One, Second Reading.
Second reading. Discussion to the bill. I recognize the author of the bill. A member from Dakota? Scott, Representative Cantrell.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members. The bill that we have before us today is the emergency funding bill for providers of disability day services. This bill has been crafted with extensive assistance and feedback from involved stakeholders. And I want to thank Chair Liebling and Chair Schultz for all of their work on this bill. And I also want to thank the Governor's Office and DHS. They have also been a tremendous help. And, you know, this is, it is critical at this point in time that we ensure that the disability day service provider infrastructure does not deteriorate and thus leave families and leave Minnesotans with disabilities without access to these vital resources and this vital, or these vital services, either during the pandemic but also into the future. So, Madam Speaker, this bill has two really main components. The first of which is an emergency funding phase, that is the initial phase. And then there's a second phase as well that disability day service providers, organizations will have to pay or apply for through DHS to examine and secure funding to expand their ability to provide socially distance and safe services so that folks with disabilities in Minnesota are still able to access services or more so access services during this pandemic in a way that is safe, in a way that is financially solvent. So, Madam Speaker, with that, members, I urge a green vote and I would appreciate your support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Akum.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the body today in support of this bill and the Disability Day Program. I think something that we can all agree upon is that we have all been impacted by COVID-19. And to prevent the spread of this incredibly contagious disease, we've limited interactions with friends and people and especially when we are meeting indoors. And our worlds have all become smaller. I would argue that those people living with disabilities feel these impacts much more than many of the rest of us. And we need to do all we can to make sure that when this pandemic is over and once again people can gather safely, the organizations that provide the disability day services are still there and able to provide the programming that these clients and families depend upon for their quality of life. I've seen firsthand how quality of life is impacted for those people living with disabilities during this incredibly challenging time. As some of you know, my husband lives with a disability. And while he doesn't participate in the day services program, he has had to stop participating in other programs because he's at high risk of contracting COVID. And without these programs, I've watched his world shrink and his quality of life diminish. Not only have I seen these impacts firsthand, but I've heard from countless members in my community telling me that their children and their families and loved ones who have benefited from the Disability Day Program before COVID. And they told me how the impacts on their social, emotional, and physical health have, without these programs, it's impacted their social, emotional, and physical health. And so while this bill won't be able to open these programs today, what it will do is ensure that when this pandemic is over and one day it will end, these programs will be able to once again enrich the lives of the people who need them. And so, Madam Speaker and members, I ask all of you to join me in supporting this bill and protecting the program to help to serve some of the most vulnerable amongst us. Thank you.
There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number One.
Third reading. The member from Nicolet, Representative Brand.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Hubert Humphrey once said that the moral test of government is how that government treats those who are in the dawn of life, the children. Those who are in the twilight of life, the elderly. And those who are in the shadows of life, the sick, the needy, and the handicapped. This bill will make a tremendous impact on the estimated 40,000 Minnesotans that require day services, including a cousin in my own family. In my area of the world, District 19A, this means life works and MRCI is allowed a fighting chance to get through this pandemic. It's not a perfect bill in that it does not include NEMTs who often transport people to day service providers in greater Minnesota. But I'm supporting this bill and I'm urging all of you, my colleagues, to support this bill today as well. I want to thank the eight DFL and 12 GOP members that signed on to my letter in July to Governor Walz, asking him and his administration to commit to the message that we aren't going to forget about the most vulnerable during this time of need and during this horrible pandemic. Thank you.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Considine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm not going to argue that this bill isn't critical and really needed. But I can't get myself to support it and I will be voting no. There is not a penny in there for home health aides and personal care attendants. The people on the front lines that have been doing the work with kindness and compassion are once again left out. I just can't stomach that and I will be voting no. I'm not asking anybody to join me because the bill is critical for keeping the infrastructure and their jobs alive. But it is beyond me how we can, year after year, session after session, just ignore these people. Thank you.
The member from Sherburne, Representative Navatney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to just read a quick letter from a mother of one of the clients served at Options of Big Lake. Currently, Options of Big Lake has 56 clients out of their normal pre-COVID 258. These clients are being served now for only three hours a day. And I would really like for the program to be available for them and for options to keep their doors open for when this is over. From the letter, "Give me a moment to tell you about our son, Jordan. He's 24 years old and has a profound mental and physical disabilities. He was diagnosed with cerebral palsy as an infant. He requires total assistance for all of his activities of daily life. He's mostly nonverbal and is wheelchair-bound. He's been attending Options in Big Lake for the last four years. Let me stress to you how important the services of Options that they provide to my son and other disabled Minnesotans. Given Jordan's physical and mental disabilities, finding appropriate job opportunities was a challenge. The program offered through Options allowed him to increase peer and community interactions, recreational opportunities, and assistance with developing life skills. In addition, he was recently approved for the center-based work. Now, for the first time in his life, he is collecting a paycheck. My husband and I get Jordan involved in as many activities that we can. However, it is difficult to make up for the pride that he feels from the work he completes and the social interactions with his peers. The quality of his life is equally as important as the assistance he receives at home from me and others. Imagine waking up in the morning, going about your daily routine, and then sitting down in a chair and going nowhere. This is no way to live. Politics should not get in the way of ensuring that these programs remain intact for the most vulnerable and underrepresented Minnesotans. My son's life has value and meaning. Instead, my son's quality of life and long-term future are affected and, in my opinion, he and others like him have become collateral damage. Every day, we are able to make choices that affect our lives. Some are simple and ordinary, others are more difficult and consequential. Some are both. Funding day programs and employment programs should be a simple decision, but not funding them has great consequence. Please make the right choice on behalf of Jordan. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Anoka, Representative Scott.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members. Much like many of you, I've received numerous email and phone calls from constituents concerned about this funding. And this has been going on for a couple of months now. And what's sad is that this was delayed for as long as it was. And it should have been passed last month when we met. But that said, I just want to give a shout out to my friend Suzie and her mom Lori, who have been champions of this. And I was able to go out and see Lori work at one of the medical device companies that all of you would know if I said it. And she's been working at this facility for a number of years. She and several of her coworkers work with invoices for this company that go all over the world. And they take so much pride in what they do. And so I know that this has been a really difficult time for those folks because they count on, they count on going to work and keeping themselves busy. And so, and I know that this medical device company has missed them as well. So I am very happy to cast my vote today for these folks and get them the much-needed help that they need. Thank you, members.
The member from Candy Ojai, Representative Miller.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I'm thankful that this day has arrived. As has been mentioned, it's been a little bit too long of a journey. And I'm thankful that there's bipartisan support on this and I hope that's remembered down the road. I think what Representative Brand said is exactly right. I was troubled that I was not seeing this being acted upon as a priority by the legislature and the governor over this time. But we'll let, we'll let the past be the past because today is a good day. I can tell you that two of them, one in my district and another, well, actually, one just outside my district and one a little bit down the way has already shut down. This program has shut down because of the issues related to this. And my other ones were hanging on in the desperate hope that they would be able to see some added funding. We have great impacts by the decisions being made related to COVID. And some of those can't be helped. I think this is one that certainly can be helped. And when we've seen the priorities of money being spent in other places, this is certainly something that's important. One thing is we move forward on this and we come out of COVID and we move into talking about budget issues and what have you. I was told in the process of investigating this issue, and I investigated deeply because I had multiple, multiple centers call me about their concerns on this. And so I researched it and I heard something very troubling in the process. And I won't point out from whom, but it was from some legitimate sources, that these programs are considered outdated, burdensome, clunky, and expensive. And I disagree with that. However, if that is the true statement, then I ask the next question. What are we doing to replace these programs? And I was told nothing to date. So we have an opportunity here, members. We have an opportunity in Minnesota to maybe make a program better. That's perfectly fine with me. Make it more efficient. It's perfectly fine with me. But these are among our most vulnerable people in the state of Minnesota. And it concerns me when the responses to why we aren't getting things done is because we don't know if we should do this program anymore. This is not the time for that. We need to make changes. We need to come up with a positive alternatives before we come to decisions withholding money or not even funding these programs. So again, today is a good day. I'm excited that I'm going to be able to tell all these organizations that are desperately needing this money that it sounds like the governor, I would presume from what we're doing today, the governor.
The member from Polk, Representative Keel.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is a serious issue. I want to thank the speaker for hearing me when I called and said, please urge the governor to move this along. I believe there's some, I've heard some members say that they need to go to work, but they are already there. There are a lot of members, are a lot of day services that are open. They're taking care of their people only three hours a day. And I would urge DHS to reevaluate that and let the counties decide, work together, and let the counties decide who needs to go and who needs to be protected. But those are issues that they're going to have to discuss and they are very important. I want, I want members to know, if you have not visited a day service of any kind, traumatic brain injury facility, all of these facilities that are helping people get through their day or help them to improve their quality of life, please go find out what they're doing, find out what's going on. I had the privilege of Zooming with Nick, a young man from Foston, Minnesota, who was excited to be on Zoom for one and for another, to be able to express to me how thrilled he was to come back. And he had only been there a couple of days. He does jobs in the community and he did those jobs. And then they have jobs that they do within their services to sell and make money for their services, but within the day services. This is really, really, really important. If we are going to change something, we have a lot of conversations to have before we change anything. And this certainly wasn't the time. I think as a body, we should be ashamed of the fact that we waited this long to handle this group. Disability provides a lot of things for our constituencies, helps families, teaches them how to handle different issues, whether it's autistic or cerebral palsy or whatever, to help those people be as, as, give them the quality of life that they need, the value, the work, the worth that they have. It is so important. I see it often when I go visit. There have been many times during our isolation that I've been someplace, grocery store, picnic. I was at a park one day and I see some of these residents and they come to me pleading with me, "Please, please, let me go back to work. Let me do my job." They just really need that efficiency and that regularity of their schedules. They are contributing to society. There are things that I see them do all the time that are so important. We need to make sure that these services are stable. I'm really disappointed to hear some of them are shut down. I don't think we can resurrect them, but if that works out, that would be wonderful. It is very important that we look to stretch the day services for as many people as we can. I know how important it is to keep them safe. I have also heard that day services is another check and balance for people to make sure that they're healthy. So I would urge that maybe the DHS can work with the counties to make it more locally decision on who should be there longer, what hours they should be there. And I will agree with Representative Considine. It is disappointing, Representative Brand. We did have more needs in this discussion in the earlier bills. But as of now, this is what we can do and how important it is. And I finally want to thank our members for speaking out, both sides of the House. Thank you, Representative Cantrell, for bringing this forward. It is so important. And once again, I would encourage you all, when we can safely, to go and visit those places. Find out what's going on and what they're doing and see how effective they are. I have to add this. I am a niece of somebody who lived in the state hospitals. I do not want to go back to that method. I was 11 years old, often went to visitor in Fergus Falls. It was not effective. It was costly. This is a way for them to be effective in their, to be enjoying their life and also, like I said earlier, to appreciate their worth, their value, and their contributions to our society. And with that, thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Candy Ojai, Representative Baker.
And members, thank you, Speaker and members. I wanted to make a brief statement and I think Representative Keel said a lot of what I wanted to say regarding allowing some of the local jurisdictions to have more flexibility with their outbreaks and what their communities are facing. I'm a proud member of the board for the West Central Industries, which is a larger organization in western Minnesota that has hundreds of clients that we work with every single week. And right now, the three-hour method a day is not working. It's not efficient. It's not enough. And our clients are just begging to get out and do more and we have work for them. These folks are essential to our economy. They're essential to our employers who need people to help them in manufacturing or cleaning or mowing or the products of things that they were doing before COVID hit us. I'm also grateful again for Representative Cantrell and Brand and Representative Keel and the work that has been done on this. And I think this is an area that we should have done much sooner. We didn't. Part of this, I think, got swept up because the governor has too much going on and we were not part of that conversation and we could have been earlier on. And we need to own that as well. But I do hope that, like the governor recently did with our schools and our districts, to give them that flexibility locally, I think we can do it here as well. We've got 40,000 clients around the state of Minnesota that can see an improvement if our policies became better and smarter with what's happening in the local communities, not with one big brush stroke across the whole state of Minnesota. So thank you for bringing this forward. Let's get this passed. And this will help in a small way, but it's a good first start. Thank you, members, very much. Appreciate your support.
The member from Meker, Representative Erdal.
Madam Speaker and members, thank you. This is a very important bill, but as has been noted, it's incomplete. But at least we're doing something. But it should have been done before. This funding, I've been told, has been available for months. There are over 30 other states who have accessed it long ago. And this delay put our disability day service centers at great risk. We simply should have acted sooner. But I am very glad that even though the bill isn't quite, I think, what it should be, it's moving today. It's going to pass. And hopefully, it'll be an aid. it'll be an aid to get these, these centers back on their feet and able to operate fully. Thank you.
The Majority Leader, the member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, we have a lot of unfinished business yet to do before we conclude our work for 2020. Unfortunately, we are not able to address many of the important issues that Minnesotans around the state are asking us to address related to the Department of Corrections and facilities shutting down, related to personal care attendance, and the need to provide a boost in pay to help them staying on the job during this pandemic as they care for the most vulnerable. We have a bonding bill to pass. There is a tax bill that many want to pass. We have a number of unfinished items of business, and unfortunately, because of the timing of bond sales, we can't address all of them right now. And we've had a recurring inability to put aside our political aspirations related to the executive orders of the governor in order to focus on the business of the people of the state. However, this is an opportunity for us to do some good for some people who count on all of us acting together to provide opportunity and a better sense of hope and purpose in life. And so, members, I would ask you to vote yes today. It is a step forward for, on an important set of issues, and I hope that we can continue to prioritize the people in our state who are counting on us to do good work. Thank you.
The member from Scott, the author of the bill, Representative Cantrell.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, members, for, for your speeches and for your support today. I wanted to just very briefly also thank Danielle Pennelli, the researcher, who also helped extensively on this, as well as Chris McCall and Patrick McQuillan. You know, in this uncertain and unique time in our state, there is widespread need, there is widespread assistance that is required to Minnesotans across our state. And while this bill today will provide an essential and vital lifeline to these day service providers and to support the well-being of Minnesotans with disabilities and to support their families, this bill is an imperfect bill. And while there is still much work to be done, I am quite heartened by the extent to which the, the members on our side have, have fought diligently to ensure that we are doing everything possible, as well as the governor's office has done everything he, their office can do, to ensure that we are meeting as many of the needs as is feasible, given the limited resources in the constantly changing situation that we are experiencing in the state, such as my colleague Representative Considine mentioned about ensuring that personal care assistance who are on the front lines of this pandemic, providing essential services, receive a hazard pay increase. There is a lot to still be done, and we are going to leave no one behind in our, in our efforts as we continue to orient around the dynamic situation of this pandemic, as we must ensure that, that we are lending assistance in every manner that, that we possibly can. So with that, members, I urge you to support this bill, and I appreciate your support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The clerk will take the role on the bill.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker. Baker. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo. Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell. Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, no.
Considine, no. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt. Excused. Davids. Davids, aye. Daphne.
Daphne, aye.
Daphne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer. Detmer, aye. Druskowski. Druskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
If we're going to get there before.
Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson.
Erickson, aye.
Erickson, aye. Fabian. Excused. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen. Franzen, aye. Fryberg.
Fryberg, aye.
Fryberg, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen. Excused. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley. Haley. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausman.
Hausman, aye.
Hausman, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann. Excused. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whitoun.
Katiza Whitoun, aye.
Katiza Whitoun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunis Paudine.
Kunis Paudine, aye.
Kunis Paudine, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Les.
Les, aye.
Les, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero. Lucero, aye. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, aye.
Moeller, aye. Moran. Moran. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor.
Nor, aye.
Nor, aye. Nornus.
Nornus, aye.
Nornus, aye. Navatni. Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neal.
O'Neal, aye.
O'Neal, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robins. Robins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sanstead.
Sanstead, aye.
Sanstead, aye. Salk.
Salk, aye.
Salk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundin.
Sundin, aye.
Sundin, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabke.
Tabke, aye.
Tabke, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal. Erdal. Vang.
Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslowick.
Waslowick, aye.
Waslowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgamot.
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Jong J.
Jong J, aye.
Jong J, aye. Jong T.
Jong T, aye.
Jong T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Haley. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye.
There being 129 ayes and 1 nay, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. Motions and resolutions.
House Concurrent Resolution Number One, introduced by New, a House Concurrent Resolution relating to Minnesota's peacetime emergency, terminating the peacetime emergency pursuant to the authority granted under Minnesota statutes, section 12.31 subdivision 2 paragraph B.
The member.
New moves that the rules be so far suspended, and House Concurrent Resolution Number One be now considered and placed upon its adoption.
The member from Shisago, Representative New, to your motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I will reserve the majority of my comments for after the discussion, but I would request a roll call on the motion.
Representative New requests a roll call. Let me see if there's 15 people in the chamber. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Nash.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker and members. About a month ago, we were here talking about the same thing, and I would like to pick up that conversation where I left it off. I know that some of you agreed that the, the conversation that we should be having is the role of the legislature. And I took the, the opportunity to look into the number of executive orders that have been issued in the last number of months. Here is July's. We just finished July. Fairly pedestrian-sized stack of paper, and here's June's. Very small pile of paper as well. And I think as legislators who have dealt with large omnibus bills in the past, you can appreciate that this is a fairly paltry size of, of paper that is dedicated to the is dedicated to the number of executive orders that have come out of the administration. Now, I will concede to you early on that the governor needed the executive powers to lay the groundwork for the response the state would have to COVID-19. I think we all felt that, and the vote coming off of both chamber floors was very strong. But as time has progressed, the groundwork that was necessary to be laid has been laid. It's been there, and as I just showed to you, the number of executive orders is quite paltry in coming out of the administration. So what does that say to us? What it says to us is that the need to restore the legislature to its position as the third leg on the stool is now more vital than ever. I would imagine that you get the same number of phone calls and emails or text messages or Facebook messages as I do that says, "We are looking to the 201 of you that serve in the legislature to go back to St. Paul, perhaps on an on-call basis, as an as-needed basis." You know, we have the ability to, as we all know, decide when a special session ends, and there were times, I think, in the second special session, perhaps, when the length in between the need to meet was extended to five days. And for any of you who remember deadline week, because we all love them, you'll remember that we could sit in a committee room and deal with bills for hours and hours and hours. So if you remember perhaps a deadline week that you might remember, the stack of papers made this look embarrassingly small. Members, we have the ability to deal with a tremendous amount of bills quickly. It's easy to do, and what the folks in my district have been telling me, and I would imagine many in your district have been telling you, is that the governor set the ground to respond, and now they are looking to us to insert ourselves, to go back into the role of the legislature, which is the policymaking body in the state of Minnesota. So today, you have the ability to do so. I will tell you, last time we tried this, I was very embarrassed that we couldn't even take it past the debate to suspend the rules. I thought, perhaps naively, that we were going to actually have an up or down vote on whether we were going to talk about whether we would end the governor's executive powers. But we didn't even do that. You wouldn't even give it a vote. We just talked about suspending the rules, that we might pick up that effort. What a crushing disappointment that was for me, and I think for many Minnesotans as well, that you wouldn't even pick up the idea that we hid behind a procedural vote to not suspend the rules. But members, here's the deal. You've seen the number of executive orders, and I will tell you, none of them have been emergencies. As the emergency powers would connote, you would think, "Oh, he's doing important things. He's doing things that only he can do and needs autonomous power to do so." Folks, I've seen us do amazing things quickly here, run things through committee, sit in a committee room until your legs and other parts of your body that sit in a chair for a long period of time go numb, because we can do the work. When we stood up and filed for election, ran for election, and were elected, we said we would be willing to come down here at a moment's notice and do important things. And I will concede to you that the response that we have to COVID should be an important thing that we deal with seriously. But we are, as I said last time, think about the Thanksgiving Day example, we're not even at the kiddie table. We can't even see the kiddie table from where we are, and I find that reprehensible. The capacity for work in the 201 people that we have here is staggering. Why not put us back into the game? Because effectively what we've been doing is we've been here to rubber stamp a few things, move a few things through the legislative process, but nothing of consequence or subsequent. And I think it is time that we, one, vote to suspend the rules, to, two, have an actual debate. Heretofore, we've not even done that. So members, if you want to look at the people in your district in the eye and say, "I'm willing to talk about difficult things," vote to suspend the rules, and then we can go on all day if you'd like. We can have the difficult conversations, and you can still vote the way you want, and I'm presuming that you're going to vote to not suspend, but let it come to the floor to have a debate. There should be a large volume of debate coming out of this chamber. There hasn't been. Take back your role. Take back the role of a legislator and a policymaker in the state of Minnesota and say, "I'm willing to have hard conversations." Don't hide behind a procedural vote. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Scott, Representative Cantrell.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I urge members not to vote in favor of suspending the rules. We are still in the midst of a pandemic, a global pandemic, one that has resulted in countries across the world prohibiting the travel of Americans to their countries, one where we are still seeing spikes throughout our country in many states. Now is the time to continue to be judicious, to continue to be thoughtful and diligent in how we are addressing this pandemic in order to ensure that we are protecting our healthcare workers who are on the front lines, healthcare workers like the people in my family who I care about, the nurses and midwives, who are risking their lives to ensure that Minnesotans are receiving care at this critical time in our country and in our state. You know, we need to make sure that we prevent as many preventable deaths as possible in our state that could stem from making a misstep in how we respond to this pandemic. In this conversation about the governor's peacetime emergency, 49 out of 50 states have a peacetime or public health emergency of some variety. This isn't outside of the norm. This is best practice. There's a federal state of emergency as well, and that is because we are facing uncertain times, and the legislature has not in any manner abdicated its responsibility to govern. We are still governing alongside the governor. We are still advocating for our constituents. We are still doing our job, and we have all hands on deck right now as we are trying to ensure not only are we securing the health and safety of Minnesotans, of people on the front lines, of our first responders and healthcare workers, but we're trying to ensure that as we proceed throughout this pandemic, that we are reopening in a manner that is sustainable, in a manner that is safe, so that we can not only ensure that people don't end up with a ventilator or end up in the ICU, but to make sure that we curtail whatever prolonged economic harm could stem from a strategy that isn't cautious, that isn't gradual for reopening our economy. This is about continuing to mitigate prolonged economic harm that will result, as we have seen in other states that have not been as judicious as Minnesota, that reopen too quickly and now have had to close again. Only suffering comes from that. Now, as I've heard my colleagues on the other side of the aisle talk time and time again, "Oh, it's only the people with pre-existing conditions that we have to be careful about. It's only the people who are over the age of 65, over the age of 70, and they can just stay home." Well, the reality, members, is that anywhere at minimum between 36% and 40% of Minnesotans over the age of 18 have a pre-existing condition. I have a pre-existing condition. Almost all of us have a pre-existing condition or know someone who has a pre-existing condition that predisposes us to severe and adverse health outcomes if we were to contract this virus. We cannot talk about elderly Minnesotans or Minnesotans who have chronic health conditions as an afterthought and how we seek to navigate through this pandemic. This is not a time for politics. This is a time to govern by science, to govern in unison, as the virus doesn't care what political affiliations we have. All the virus cares about, all that the virus responds to, is what we can come up with is the best possible solutions to ensure that we are saving as many Minnesotans' lives as possible, that we can move forward on a trajectory of reopening our economy in a way that is sustainable. But by ending the governor's peacetime emergency, we're throwing out all the hard work, all the sacrifices that Minnesotans have made, and we are telling the people who have spent so much time on the front lines risking their own safety, that their suffering, that their personal risks to themselves was meaningless. Let us stay the course. Let us continue to ensure that Minnesota moves along a path of reopening sustainably, a path in which we don't lose all the progress that we have fought so hard to make that so many Minnesotans have sacrificed to gain. And let us not ever consider Minnesotans with chronic health conditions or elderly Minnesotans as an afterthought to say, "Well, you know, they can just stay home." Because we all know someone who has a chronic health condition, they must be our priority. Every Minnesotan must be a priority. Members, I urge you to not vote in favor of suspending the rules. We have to stay the course, and we can navigate through this thing together. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Douglas, Representative Franzen.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. It sure is nice to be in this chamber today, although I feel that we should all be in this chamber exercising the election certificate that we are so blessed to have. That's why we were elected, is to sit on these seats into this beautiful chamber and be the voice of the people. 15 days to slow the spread, though, remember that? Remember that statement? 15 days to slow the spread. Well, you times that by 9.93333, go on, times for 149 days. That 15 days to slow the spread has multiplied that many times. I feel that we are being held hostage by our governor and by the Democrats who refuse to vote to remove those emergency powers from him. 149 days, people, and 33 more days, that will be half of the year, half of the year that one man has been holding these executive powers. Bloomberg.com's today headline, it read, "Small businesses are dying by the thousands, and no one is tracking the carnage." If you aren't following COVID clarity on Twitter, it's a shame. There's some real facts being tweeted that each and every one of you should be paying attention to. Yesterday, the account tweeted, "Now, after 1 million tests on tracking 60,000 infected people, we have plenty of data to assess the risk in Minnesota based on the CDC estimate of 10 to 1, actual cases to detected cases. The approximate COVID vitality rate is less than .27% for all of Minnesota, less than And if you factor outside of long-term care, it's less than .07%." Let me say that again. The approximate COVID fatality rate is less than .27% for all of Minnesota, less than .07% outside long-term care. Unbelievable. There are no bodies in the mega morgue. There's no bodies rotting in the streets. There is no emergency people. Instead, we have a governor who is using COVID to control the people he works for, and we have weak Democrats too afraid to stand up to him for fear of being canceled. It's disgusting. Our constitution is being trampled on. Governments are supposed to protect the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Instead, some people are taking their own lives because their livelihoods have been taken from them, and the stress from it all is all becoming too much. Liberty is something in the rearview window previous to the executive orders. We were thought to be responsible in the use of our freedom under the rule of law as long as it did not deprive anyone else of their freedom. Now government is deciding who is responsible and who is not, and if someone or some group steps out of line and exercises their liberty, Keith Ellison punishes them with fines and lawsuits. How disgusting is that? Pursuit of happiness. Government is making this just about impossible, destroying livelihoods, only allowing certain people to work. But if you want to experience any sort of happiness, you better have a darn mask on or suffer the consequences for not falling in line. This week, we found out the owner of Burnsville Mall is losing the mall due to foreclosure. The Cozy Cup in my district, Parker's Prairie, isn't opening back up anytime soon, if ever. All across the state, businesses are closing shop. Small business, you guys, is the glue that holds this country together. It is the backbone of our economy. For most small business owners, it is their retirement fund. It is the wealth that they have built up, and now government is threatening it. And instead of protecting small businesses, Democrats have teamed up with big businesses and corporations and big banks. They do not care about the little people. They do not care about the small business. They do not care about the economy of our country and our state. But you know who it seems like they care about? Shooters and looters and rapists. Oh, my. Crime in this state is out of control, and they are more concerned about people wearing masks. Unapproved rodeos, sturgis bikers, and making sure people aren't having fun at bars and restaurants. You know why? Because the virus really loves to hang out at bars and restaurants, I suppose. So the next thing that Governor Dayton most likely will be doing is closing down the bars and restaurants, because, oh, that's where the virus hangs out. Yes, my friends, crime is out of control in this state, specifically Minneapolis. Perhaps tweeting about wearing masks and socially distancing doesn't leave time for the Democrats to know what crime is going on. Just last week, the mayor of Alexandria, her son was in the Twin Cities. His car was hijacked at gunpoint by kids. Three of the kids that were arrested, 12 and 13 years old, gunpoint. Can you even believe it? The real crisis is the killing, the stabbing, the shooting, the raping, the looting, and on and on and on. That is the crisis of our state. Minneapolis right now is leading the nation in murder, not COVID deaths. Murder. Three hours ago, there was a stabbing in Loring Park at the basketball court, 11:08 a.m. You guys should follow this account. It is shocking. And instead, two hours ago, a report of another stabbing, a 101 West Grant at a gas station. This is happening across our state, in our Twin Cities. But I guess this isn't important, because we got to make sure people are wearing their masks, got to make sure that the virus isn't having any fun at the bars and restaurants. We got to make sure that kids aren't playing tennis at the tennis courts, because that's where the virus also likes to hang out. Got to make sure that those kids conform in school by wearing masks, socially distancing, not trusting each other, not building friendships, having their entire childhood changed for a new social experiment. Yes, my friends, there is a crisis, but it isn't COVID. It's the crime that is running through the state of Minnesota. I hope you all feel better about yourself. Thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Herr.
Madam Speaker, members, when I look at where we have been as a state, what we've been through, and what still lies ahead, I can't help but wonder how it can be a thought for us to suspend the rules to take up the motion to end the peacetime emergency. Because I'm not an epidemiologist, I'm not going to give any medical advice. What I will say is that I have been following the experts, what the experts are saying around COVID-19 trends in other states and the data from Minnesota. What I consistently hear, regardless of location, is that the pandemic is like nothing we've ever seen before and how this virus disproportionately impacts communities of color. Early on, health experts believed that COVID-19 would also follow a seasonal pattern like the flu, but they know now that it does not. This virus will only subside when we have taken the necessary steps to stop the spread. That means we need to stay nimble and flexible to address the needs that arise when they arise. Furthermore, the state of Minnesota now has data to show that not only does COVID-19 infect communities of color disproportionately, but the vitality rate is also much higher in these communities. For communities that identify as white, 20 deaths incidence per 100,000. For Native Americans, that's 146. Blacks, that's 99. Latinx, 75. And Asian, 69. What does this matter when it comes to this motion? Because COVID-19 impacts more than just a person's individual health. Members of the BIPOC community, particularly immigrant and refugees, tend to hold jobs in manufacturing, the food industry, and similar businesses. In our education spaces, many paraprofessionals are BIPOC. To keep all of our communities safe and to address the disproportionate impact to communities of color as it relates to health, economics, education, and housing, our state has to be able to act quickly and appropriately. The peacetime emergency has allowed for a state response to ensure that we have a coordinated statewide emergency response system, that we broker breakthrough testing deals, secure significantly improved control of COVID-19 through increased public health surveillance and research, execute quickly on procurement and contracting, keep our health and human service systems intact, ensuring these systems for our most vulnerable population, require school districts and charter schools to provide safe and effective learning environments for students utilizing a format that is flexible for the needs of the district, and provide housing support and assistance to small businesses and worker support. Now, I was really going to actually end what I was going to say here, but I am truly disappointed at what I continue to hear, how we as elected officials, you know, we were elected to do legislative work and how we aren't doing anything substantive. I'm not sure where this is coming from, because I have been working nonstop for months. I've been meeting with departments, with constituents, with research, with organizations and associations. I've been working on bills. I'm not sure why other legislators aren't exercising their election certificate, because it's not because of a lack of work. I continue to be disappointed at hearing people talk about Minneapolis-St. Paul in such a flippant way, as if like we don't care about raping and looting and killing and that that's the only thing happening in our city. I don't understand why we are sitting up here talking about these things, as if they are all mutually exclusive, that we can't work on dealing with the pandemic and also what we're seeing as the fallout or aftermath, what happened to George Floyd. All of these things are happening, they're happening as a result of the systemic and the structural racism that exists in all of the structures, whether you Whether you live in Minneapolis or St. Paul, whether you live in rural Minnesota, they exist in all of the structures that we are part of. And we are fooling ourselves if we think that just because we are asking people to wear masks, which is not a political issue, it is a safety issue. Why that? We can't deal with ensuring that Minnesotans are safe, but also dealing with the fact that we have to do hundreds of years of systemic and structural racism that exists in our policing, in our housing, in our economics, in our financial situation here in the state of Minnesota. Why we cannot do all of those things? They are not mutually exclusive. And as was stated earlier, that we can, you know, we can deal with things quickly. We absolutely cannot deal with things quickly here in the legislature. I haven't been here very long, but what I have seen is it takes us forever to get anything through. And who suffers the most? Those who are marginalized, those who are vulnerable, and those who need the most assistance possible. We do not move quickly. We showed that when we worked on police reform, even though that moved quickly than other things, I think. That is not quick. And if we were moving so quickly, we would have undone hundreds of years of systemic and structural racism that disproportionately impacts people of color and low-income community members. I'm just so tired of having this same discussion and then having discussions around it so flippantly as if like this is such a casual thing that, oh, how it is that we don't care about what is happening within our own cities. I live here. I live in St. Paul. I am out in community every single day. None of these things that Representative France and Menke have happened to me, it doesn't mean it doesn't happen to other people, and it doesn't mean that it's not an urgent issue. It means that we have a lot of work to do, and we need to work in conjunction with dealing with what we are seeing in the pandemic here as well. And so what I would like to do is urge everyone to please vote no on the motion to suspend. Our work is not done. Governor Walz has been working with the authority given to him and acting appropriately. So the foundation has been laid, yes, there has been a foundation that has been laid. But we continue to learn, work, and adjust to the virus. To stay ahead of what could go terribly wrong, we must maintain the current peacetime emergency. Please, vote no on the motion to suspend. Thank you.
The member from right, Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So as I was getting my day started this morning, had my nice hot cup of coffee, sat down, starting to prepare my day to fight for another day of truth and for hard-working Minnesotans to uphold the values of the Constitution and what made our state so great and our country so great. So I began to peruse the headlines, and then I came across this article with a quote from Madam Speaker, leader of the Democrat majority here in the House. Speaking of the peacetime emergency and the special session that we were going to come in and discuss and vote on the emergency powers for the continuation of another 30 days, Madam Speaker had the following to say. Quote, "The Republicans are going to make us listen to them drone on for hours, and then we will take a vote, and the vote will be that the Minnesota House is not revoking the emergency." Unquote. Well, Madam Speaker and members, how incredibly insulting. The fact is, Madam Speaker is admitting that Republicans who are standing up for those who have lost their job because of Governor Walz's Great Minnesota Shutdown, because of those hard-working business owners who've had their businesses' doors slammed shut and had their livelihoods ripped out from underneath them, for the students that want to be in school, for us Republicans who are simply standing up for constitutional separation of powers, for these important conversations and the voices of hard-working Minnesotans all across the state to simply be summed up by Democrats as "listening to us drone on." Can it get any more of a slap in the face? Madam Speaker, Democrats do not care about the hardship that is being inflicted on Minnesotans, do it have done nothing wrong. I heard earlier, Madam Speaker, the majority leader say there is the inability, I tried to write it down as fast as I could, the inability of some to put aside their political aspirations pertaining to Governor Walz's executive orders. Well, Madam Speaker, here's the opportunity. Democrats, you have the opportunity to put aside your political aspirations in regards to Governor Walz's executive orders and vote to uphold the Constitution. Vote green on this vote before us and put aside your political aspirations. Madam Speaker, when is the last time you have heard Governor Walz utter the phrase "flatten the curve"? I haven't heard that for at least six weeks. Why? Because the original intent of the emergency powers was to flatten the curve, to push out the timeframe which we would contract COVID-19 to allow the healthcare system to prepare. But we haven't heard that phrase because the original intent has now morphed. It's morphed into a power grab by Democrats, and then they want to persist this power grab as they've been doing all summer long. And it's endless. Madam Speaker, what is the objective standard that we are seeking to meet whereby we can roll back the emergency powers? What is the number of COVID tests? What is the number of ICU beds? What is the number of whatever metric? There is none. It's completely abstract. It's completely subjective. By design, to allow this manufactured emergency to continue on in perpetuity. Members, COVID-19 is very serious, and it requires a very serious response and attention. But it is no longer in an emergency phase. The emergency phase ended weeks or months ago. We are now in a management phase. It is time to return to the Constitution. We can do that by returning the three branches of government, by restoring the legislative branch to its proper co-equal role, which has been usurped for at least a third of a year, and we're very quickly approaching a half of a year, members. Madam Speaker, members, please vote green. Thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Mohler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I'm frankly astounded that we just heard right now that this is a manufactured emergency. In the United States, we have 165,000 deaths. And I'd like to just put that in perspective, Madam Speaker. That's 37 times more deaths than the Revolutionary War. It's more than the Vietnam War and Korean War combined. It's more than the deaths in World War I, and it's 55 times 9/11 deaths. Let me say that again, 55 9/11. We're in this situation right now because of the abysmal federal response, because of the disbelief of science and experts, misinformation being spread, not taking this seriously, refusing to take precautions the experts tell us will help, even today on the health floor. And, members, every state has an emergency order. I just checked the National Governors Association website and confirmed that every state has an emergency order in place. So that includes blue states, red states. Many of these states, red states included, have extended these orders multiple times. The emergency, members, is not over. Please vote no on the motion to suspend. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Carlson-L.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a little, or a few comments, probably from a more historical perspective. But first of all, you know, the debate, I think we have to kind of get it back on what I think should be the focus, and that's that we're in the middle of a pandemic. And as a result, you do have to move rapidly. And if we were to take the governor's emergency powers away during a period of a pandemic, we would simply slow down the process. You know, I've been here when we've had special legislative sessions that were designed and thought of to be short. We even had one that overlapped into the regular session. Sometimes they have a tendency to get long and drawn out. Even when we've had prior agreements, sometimes arriving at that prior agreement has taken a lot of time. If you were to take the governor's emergency powers away, it would slow down the process. I think it would increase the number and length of special sessions. And as a result, we would be putting the healthcare of Minnesotans at risk. So, Madam Speaker, I would encourage a no vote on the motion for some of the reasons that I've cited. And as people cast their votes, just keep in mind we are in the middle of a pandemic, and special legislative sessions to respond to a pandemic just simply would not work. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, the majority leader, Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members, and thank you for a very brief debate because I do think we have covered this topic before, maybe more than once. And I'm not sure that opinions have changed, even though sometimes a few new words get thrown in here and there to kind of vary it a little bit. But we've been through down this path, Representative Nash. We actually did have a clean-up-and-down vote in June. We voted to suspend and allow that vote to take place. I'm not sure that that really changed anything one way or the other. And so I don't really think we're going to be voting with you to suspend the rules today either. I would encourage members to not do that. And the short stack of papers Representative Nash that you brought forward, I think, is an indicator that we are at a good spot as far as the level of executive authority applied to managing the crisis. We're not needing to change things rapidly. The disease has been relatively stable, as you've said, and we're in a good spot, which, as we know, could change at any time. The reason we can't get rid of the emergency orders and start having the legislature getting involved is because the legislature says and does bizarre things. And I'm not certain that we want to trust people who engage in the kind of outrageous and bizarre rhetoric that we sometimes hear in the House to be voting on whether or not we should be taking basic public health measures like a mask mandate. So I would ask us to vote no. I think a responsible legislature could be involved. As we've said before, serious discussion, serious debate, serious decision-making about how to go forward would be welcome. But engaging in negotiations with the kind of outward fringe of the Republican Party is not going to help us get through this, and I ask members to vote no.
Members, we do have social distancing in place on the House floor, and we do have assigned seating. I ask members to comply with the request to sit in your assigned seating and social distance as we have been asked to do to protect our staff and one another. If need be, we can ask the sergeant to move people, but I hope that that won't be necessary.
The member from Shisago, Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Boy, this is a little like Groundhog Day. We've been here before. Every month, as it turns out, we are here asking to end the governor's emergency powers. And I think several members today have hit the nail on the head that there's no doubt we are dealing with a serious illness. We all understand that the COVID-19 virus is serious, and we need to take action to make sure that we are protecting Minnesotans. For some reason, what is not clear is that this is no longer an emergency. There have been exactly four executive orders that have been given in the last month, and not a single one was an emergency. Every one of those executive orders took a great deal of time and planning to come to. As it turns out, that's what we do here in the legislature. We meet, we vet, we talk to experts, we look at data. That's actually how we make decisions. So the fact that these decisions are still being made unilaterally is absurd. We are no longer in the emergency phase of dealing with COVID-19. And just to go over a few issues that we've talked about over and over and over that somehow we cannot get through. Our peak death rate in Minnesota was on May 28. Over the last week, we've averaged about 20% of that peak death rate, 20%. And that number's been pretty constant for about a month now. We are nowhere near where we were at the peak of this crisis. Peak ICU usage was May 28 as well. And over the last week, we've been about half that. We've had about half that number in the ICU over the past week. Hospitalization rate, the peak, was also May 28. Over the last week, we've had less than half that number. The percent of positive tests has been steady for a month, almost two months, really, with some minor variations. Two months. These numbers are not changing. Hospitalizations and ICU usage has been relatively constant for two months. Two months. And we are, and we're being told that we still need one person to make every decision in the state of Minnesota. This is bonkers. This is nuts. No one here is arguing that the COVID-19 virus isn't serious. Of course, it's serious. But what we are seeing is that we are no longer dealing with an emergency. We are following trends. We've got data. We see where things are coming and going. I mean, you look at, you look at the executive order on school openings. Now, fortunately, the governor did take the approach that House Republicans had been advocating for and did a regional approach and allowed some level of local control over what was happening rather than all of the other one-size-fits-all mandates that we've been seeing across the state. The decision still did not need to be made by one person. Clearly, we were absolutely on board with the concepts that the governor put forward. It's what we were advocating. As legislators, and, you know, we were, we were just told that the legislature should not be involved in these decisions because we do bizarre things. My goodness. Then what are we doing here? You look at the things that we are responsible for as a legislature, and to think that somehow we are not capable of dealing with the virus is just silliness. If we can't deal with the virus, then frankly, we shouldn't be dealing with any of the issues that are coming before us in the legislature. If we are that incapable of reviewing facts and data and talking to the experts and understanding what is going on, my goodness, why are we even here? We were also told that we can navigate through this. Well, guess what? We are not navigating through this. We have abdicated all of our responsibility to one person in the state of Minnesota. We are not asking for some kind of special circumstance where the legislature is making these decisions. We are suggesting that the legislature should take on its proper role, that we should evaluate the data, we should talk to experts, we should hold hearings, and understand what's going on so that we can so that we can all together make the best decisions for the state of Minnesota. Members, I would recommend voting yes to suspend the rules to once again take up a vote on ending the governor's emergency powers.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Acom. Acom. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Backer.
Backer, aye.
Backer, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, nay.
Bonner, no. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, aye.
Baker, aye. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, no. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi. Bernardi.
Bernardi, no.
Bernardi, no. Bierman.
Bierman, no.
Bierman, no. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, no.
Brand, no. Cantrell. Cantrell, no. Carlson A.
Carlson A, no.
Carlson A, no. Carlson L.
Carlson L, no.
Carlson L, no. Christensen. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no. Claflin.
Claflin, no.
Claflin, no. Considine.
Considine, no.
Considine, no. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Doubt. Excused. Davids. Davids, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, no.
Dafne, no. Dean.
Dean, no.
Dean, no. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer. Detmer, aye. Drazkowski. Drazkowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, no.
Eklund, no. Edelson. Edelson.
Edelson, no.
Edelson, no. Elkins.
Elkins, no.
Elkins, no. Ericson.
Ericson is aye.
Ericson, aye. Fabian. Excused. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen. Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, no.
Freiberg, no. Garofalo.
Garofalo, yes.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, no.
Gomez, no. Green.
Green, yes.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, no. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, no.
Hanson, no. Hassan. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, no.
Hausmann, no. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann. Excused. Herr.
Herr, no.
Herr, no. Hertos.
Lukas, yes.
Hertos, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, no.
Hornstein, no. Howard.
Howard, no.
Howard, no. Hewitt.
Hewitt, no.
Hewitt, no. Johnson. Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, no.
Jordan, no. Juergens.
Juergens, both aye.
Juergens, aye. Keel. Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, no.
Cleavorn, no. Cagle.
Cagle, no.
Cagle, no. Katiza Waton.
Katiza Waton, no.
Katiza Waton, no. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw. Creshaw.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye. Kunis Paudine.
Paudine, no.
Kunis Paudine, no. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, no.
Lee, no. Lesch. Lesch. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, no.
Lean, no. Lilly.
Lilly, no.
Lilly, no. Lippert.
Lippert, no.
Lippert, no. Listegard.
Listegard, aye.
Listegard, aye. Long. Long, no. Lucero. Lucero, aye. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, no.
Mahoney, no. Mann.
Mann, no.
Mann, no. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Mueller.
Mueller, no.
Mueller, no. Moran.
Moran, no.
Moran, no. Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison, no. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, no.
Murphy, no. Nash. Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, no.
Nelson M, no. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Noor.
Noor, no.
Noor, no. Nornus.
Nornus, aye.
Nornus, aye. Navatney. Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, no.
Olson, no. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, no.
Purcell, no. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Poppy.
Poppy, no.
Poppy, no. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, no.
Pryor, no. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson, no. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, no.
Sandell, no. Sandstedt.
Sandstedt, aye.
Sandstedt, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, no.
Sauk, no. Schumacher. Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, no.
Schultz, no. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, no.
Stevenson, no. Sundin.
Sundin, pass.
Sundin, pass. Swazinski. Swazinski. Tabkey.
Tabkey, no.
Tabkey, no. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdol.
Erdol, aye.
Erdol, aye. Vang.
Vang, no.
Vang, no. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, no.
Wagenius, no. Wazlowick.
Wazlowick, no.
Wazlowick, no. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, no. Wogomott.
Wogomott, no.
Wogomott, no. Zhang J. Zhang J. Zhang T. Zhang T.
Zhang T, no.
Zhang T, no. Yuakim.
Yuakim, no.
Yuakim, no. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, no. Acom. Acom. Doubt.
Aye.
Doubt.
Doubt, aye.
Doubt, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, no.
Lesch, no. Sundin.
Sundin, no.
Sundin, no. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Zhang J.
Zhang J, no.
Zhang J, no. Hassan.
Hassan, no.
Hassan changes from aye to no. Acom. 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 Acom.
Acom, no.
Acom, no.
There being 61 ayes and 71 nays, the motion does not prevail.
House Concurrent Resolution Number One is being referred to the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration.
Motions and resolutions. There are copies of the non-controversial motions at the House desk and online. Without objection, the motions will prevail. Hearing no objection, the motions prevail. Representative Winkler.
Winkler moves that the chief clerk be and is hereby instructed to correct and approve the Journal of the House 2023 Special Session for today, Wednesday, August 12, 2020, and that he be authorized to include in the Journal for today any subsequent proceedings.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, that's the motion to correct the Journal. I ask for a yes vote.
Any discussion on the Winkler motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails.
Winkler moves that the chief clerk be and he is hereby instructed to inform the Senate and the governor